We will call this meeting the Board of Education to order at seven thirteen. If anyone would please rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, which stands on our nation under the God of liberty and justice.
All right, Willa, I believe you have wonderful and sad news.
I do. It's very sad, but super wonderful for her. You've met Dr. Daily Burns before. You've seen her in the instructional rounds and all the various things that we've interacted with her over the years. She has decided to retire. So I wanted to honor Dr. Daily Burns here in front of you because she has been an incredible employee for the town public schools. Many people don't know this, but she came in with, she has all these certifications, the one oh two, the oh nine seven, and oh nine two, and oh nine three. What that means is she was capable, is capable of doing everything. She's like a jack of all trades when she comes into reading. So she can interact with the reading interventionists and with the, you know, reading teachers. And not only can she lead them, she can take a seat next to them and show them the way to do it, which is, which is very unique. To be able to have that kind of skill, to have those kinds of skills is a very, very unique thing. And on top of that, not many people know that she was honored nationally and internationally with Dr. David Kearns. In fact, aren't you going to Europe?
We went.
Went to Europe. She wanted to go with summer, right?
Yeah.
So she went to Europe. She was part of the research that he did, and he was through UConn. I think he's moved to.
UNC.
UNC. And so she went as part of his group to present and to be a part of that. So and there's just no end to the things that she has done to help this district with literacy. When we started years ago, I would say we didn't really have the phonics programs and the things in place that were necessary to appropriately address kids that had struggled with dyslexia, things like that. As the state moved things forward and started communicating some of the best practices, we were already on top of, you know, we were already on that force because of Dr. Daily Burns. She had already been bringing us in that direction. So the adjustments that needed to be made were, you know, were more modest because we had already been doing it. There's always, always room to grow. She would always find that room to grow and help us grow into it. But that's been one of the most incredible aspects of it is just to look at over the years how much it's grown. She started as an assistant principal at Birch Grove. And so she had always been helping us at that level with kids and being an administrator. But she just busted out into the curriculum supervision early. That's when, you know, she helped us there, but man, she really brought the kids forward. There are many, many kids in this district who have, you know, done an incredible job in reading and have recovered from struggles because of what Dr. Daily Burns has brought to the district. So I just wanted to honor her tonight, give her, you know, her two, two praise, and give her a couple of things here. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
She's my favorite person for eighties because I love her.
Yes, I was told today I may look like Elwood. But thank you all.
Thank you.
It's just been wonderful to be here in Tallinn, and I've enjoyed every moment of it. And, you know, thirty-seven years in education has actually gone by pretty quickly. I know that sounds insane, but it does. The time just clicks away. But thank you to Dr. Willet for always having my back and being so supportive of everything that I've done. So thank you. I couldn't have done it without all of you, but without Dr.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Let me say, just, you know, this is your five on the board. And, you know, I'm not overdoing it when I say I could see the impact that you leave on this district, on the instructors, on the students. As a parent, watching my little one, you know, who had issues reading going in, to where she is now, just thrilled and loving reading, is a direct picture of the thing we do. And I've noticed in all of the instructional rounds that you've been a part of. And I ask the questions because I don't understand a lot of that. And you put it in words that made it easy for me to understand, but easy then to turn and recognize in the little games and the tricks that my daughter was doing that would learn it, you know. And so, you know, I'm just, like I said, I'm excited at the adventure that you're about to have, and all the fun that you and your husband are going to get into. I'm excited to see each and every one of these students that leaves here in a better world because of you. And I don't think you're done. It may not be educational here, but I think you're going to continue teaching and spreading that love.
Thank you. Thank you. That was very sweet. Thank you very, very much.
I echo a lot of what Tony said, but thinking all day what I could possibly say to you to honor you. I've known you for so long. And as, you know, as assistant principal and then, you know, working with you for PTO, but also as a parent, that you were wonderful to me and to all the volunteers that helped out in Birch Grove. You were always someone that stepped in and was easy to talk to, was easy to work with. And, but as a parent, I, you know, I had an experience too where, you know, my son was going into sixth grade and we had a teacher move. And I was a little bit worried about his comprehension. I walked into parents' night and I was so grateful that you were standing in that room. And you were ju, either you had just done testing or you were about to do some kind of testing. And I was able to ask you those questions and you got back to me. And you were able to just step into the role, back into the role of teacher. And again, I was so grateful to have, to have that. And then now being a board member and seeing you from a different angle and the way that you present to us, the way that you have led us through the rounds the past couple of years. It's just, you don't, Barbara, you don't, you don't just teach with your, you know, intelligence and your experience. You do with your heart. And it shows, and it shows how much that you love what you do and you love our students and you love reading. So I just, again, like I said to you when you walked in, I'm so happy for you, so sad for us. I don't know how anyone could possibly fill your shoes. And just thank you so much for the years of service that you have put into us and enjoy every moment of your retirement.
Thank you very much. Very, very sweet. I didn't, I didn't know what to expect. This is very. Very, very much. Really appreciate it. And you're right, I do love teaching reading. I really do. It's just as simple as that. I love it. I love to read. So I just always love. That's just where my heart lies. So it's been.
Well, if you want to start an online book club, send me.
I'd love to. Well, I'm good for each. Hook me up.
I'll start her book tour soon. So say you knew her when. So knowing that the purpose of this is to, to, you know, reward you and lodge you, it's not to punish you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on then, do we have any additions to the agenda? Okay. I'm going to move on. I will entertain a motion for the approval of the August fourteenth minutes. So. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ready?
Aye.
Dan? Again?
Aye.
All right. Katie?
Aye.
Aye.
If you said Dana, I say aye.
Thank you. Minutes passed. Moving on to public participation. The members of the Tallinn Board of Education welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments or points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. We will alternate between those in the room and those online. If you are online, please raise your, your little zoom hand and you will be covered. As always, start with your name and address for the minutes. Looking up there, I'm thinking.
I know. I'm thinking someone's different. We're not.
Another going twice. Anybody online that would like to speak or in the room? All right. Hearing none. Moving on. Correspondence.
Nothing to report for the last two weeks.
Points of information. May I from the board like to speak? Fall sports start soon and I will be back in the fall. So September, what, nineteenth, I think, is the first home game for football. So. And we got Friday Night Lights back. Dr. Willet, I know that was. Sure you got plenty of emails about what happened with that lights. Friday Night Lights is back. I think four out of the five varsity football games are Friday nights. So good for students, good for families, good for everybody. So, and staff. So expecting a lot of spirit.
Go Eagle.
Go Eagle.
Are those times for those games in the bowl terms?
Yes. CIAC's website, it was just posted on Facebook recently from somebody, I can't remember who exactly, but I can screenshot it, maybe blast it to the board or whatever.
I think on the athletics page, there is a link where what you do is you click on it and it will push all, all those events, whichever you select, into your calendar. And it's actually pretty cool. I used it a couple of times. It'll, yeah, you select which ones you want. Then it puts them all through the, the year that it has.
You have to go to each school because our.
I think the last time I used it, you select the sports. I would have to go back and look at the update, but that, it was a very useful thing.
Oh.
It's one of the ways where you can catch it all.
I gotta look into that. And I know soccer and I think it's just football and soccer, right? I believe fall sport. But good luck to all our athletes starting the boards up here. It started a few weeks ago. So games start here soon.
Jayden, they had a scrimmage tonight. Football.
Football? Gotcha. Ready?
I just wanted to acknowledge Dr. Willet and thank him for, you know, we had some issues with getting some of the materials before the board meeting and stuff. And we discussed that. It's been going great. And I just wanted to, you know, say thank you for that. It's helpful.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Move on then. Student representatives yet? Midian liaison reports. Communication.
Yes, we had a meeting this afternoon to. Few things, but mainly the hot item of that coming up, wants the students come back for these Birch Grove and all of the other schools that'll be putting out the co-curricular activities. See what people be interested in, hopefully participating in, whether on the fall or session. I guess activities don't. Probably good. And then the other conversation we had in the, was more or less, we were just kind of brainstorming some ideas about the budget, about better communication or resources we want to put out, what has been done in the past, what's been frowned upon, the lawyers or other town are doing and different things. We had a big brainstorming session today. We'll be moving along into next. So as we get closer to the budget, we'll finalize and hopefully put into action. I will be putting for the public and even for the board and the member.
Yes, we have our track for talent. So if you have any ideas that you want to see for communication regards to that budget, any thoughts or ideas, shoot them out there and we can discuss them. Jen?
For Tepco, so for Tepco, they held a successful supply drive and many happy families received their school supplies by mail this month. They are currently working on logistics for a trail of treats again at Grandville Park in October. So stay tuned for more information on that. The TMS PTO is working on a fall event, but they are looking for more volunteers to help make that happen. In fact, both Tepco and TMS are looking for volunteers to help with planning and volunteering their events this school year. So if you're interested, be contacting them and gascon. The cider mill road race, which provides donations to all of our schools, will be held this year on Saturday, October fifth. Pre-registration ends on nine twenty-nine. The entry fee for the kid fun run in one mile is twelve dollars with start times. The start time of, of start times of nine AM and nine forty-five AM respectively. The five K is twenty-five dollars and begins at ten thirty AM. You can register at runsignup.com and you can find more information on the cider mill Facebook page. For boosters, in support of our recycling program that was initiated by THS science teacher Kate Case, the boosters purchased new recycle bins for the high school for both inside and at the fall field. The annual Eagle scramble golf tournament will be held in a new location this year, the Blackledge Country Club in Hebron on September twenty-ninth. Registration begins at ten thirty AM with the shotguns start at twelve. You can register your team as well as sign up to be a sponsor at tallinboosters.com. The second annual Rocktober Music Festival will be held at the Spot Bar and Grill on Sunday, October twentieth from three to seven PM. The cover charge is ten dollars or five dollars for students and seniors. They are still looking for both student or student bands as well as sponsors for the event. And for more information, you can head over to tallinboosters.com. And then last year's project graduation was a great success at its new location at Spare Time in Vermin. The project graduation bottle drive at the high school will be held this year on nine twenty-eight. They are also currently looking for volunteers to work concession kiosks at the football games at Renshaw Field, possibly basketball games at Handball. Signups will be on the booster Facebook page.
Thank you. Curriculum.
We ended up, for a couple of reasons, canceling this month. So we will meet back again next month.
Nothing to report since we met on the fourteenth and report to the board. But just like, um, we've got our tracker. If anybody has any updates, Brian is there. We get a, while we're discussing that tracker. Policy.
Um, nothing much to add other than what we have on new business tonight that we are bringing to the board.
We have a policy centric meeting for tonight. And last but not least, okay? So just to kind of tag on, you know, want to, you know, point out to everybody online, you know, like Brian said, our, you know, the committee meetings are open to watch and view. The committee chairs, email addresses are online. You know, I urge the, the public and the participants that are watching and listening to this. If you've got ideas, reach out to the committee chairs. The committees are amazing places to be able to get a lot of these new ideas, talked through, thought out, and then bubble wrap it to the board. You know, if we're going to see particularly tonight and in the meetings coming up, we're going to see a lot of those things that started in committee come to the board with a better maturation because they've had that. So utilize it and take advantage of those opportunities. All right. So Chair of Board, and I will attempt to be brief. You know, I was talking with, with Dr. Willet yesterday, that as the doors opened up and our staff started to enter in preparation for Tuesday, when our, our, our kids go. Little one is absolutely beside herself already. Her first day of school, as she's packing and unpacking her bookbag and holding her first days of clothes and practicing saying her teacher's names so she can say it just right. Now, this year has a particular thing for me. And then my, my oldest starts her first year in a different district as a, as a teacher. So I'm looking at that, you know, that education and just the importance of what it does. And it really centered me around, you know, some of the discussion moving things. You know, last night, FFC's recommendation on the ERF. We took that in front of the town and after some interesting conversations, you know, I got reached out, one of the conferences reached out to me and, you know, in the email chat, said that, you know, the board's not done. We, we keep talking about, we talk about budgets and budgets are important. We talk about the, the day-to-day activities and those are important. But we've got a lot of things coming up in these next few months that we can and will do. You know, Brian in communication talked about that transparency and how we make it where there are events for the kids to do after school and the clubs, you know, the activities like that. Policy is looking at some of the ideas that we can put in place to make the school, the class easier or easier for them to pay attention. And then I go back to our goals and that second one where it says to foster a data-driven positive learning environment focused on strong academics, professional development, and meaningful social and emotional support for our students and staff. You know, it was Facebook pointed me at this, the survey, you know, from the CDA, where it was looking at the various, I mean, the various things that our staff and our teachers are coming into. And, you know, there's, there's a good percentage of them walking in the door already feeling stressed. It's a fight that they put on their shoulders. There's kids and challenges the kids are bringing in. And, you know, I think we can do something. I think, you know, just, you know, based on some of the accolades that we were giving this Dr. Daily Burns earlier and some of the conversations that we're having, I think we can do a better job showing the support and uplifting our staff outside of that conversation. And so that's one thing that I want to, I want to really get you guys to plant the seed there and let's start brainstorming. You know, like you keep coming back, hello, what you've said in your, your report. You know, let's start thinking of those ideas and those, those activities and those actions and those conversations that we can have in here so that this boardroom becomes a powerful tool to uplift those teachers so they can then uplift our kids. We can, we can do that. We can then turn around conversations like we did last night and continue with the town council, with the zoning and board, with, with the various parties and with the, the PTOs and all of these organizations out there that in their hearts want to make town a better place. We can, we partner with them, that we can make this. Monica, like I said, we're. All right. I'll try to be brief. Moving on, Dr. Willet, new superintendent's report. I notice there are no particular items underneath there, but do you have anything you'd like to say before we move to the business?
Just I appreciate all of your hard work and dedication. On to new business, we go.
Item oh one, the Yusuf balance review.
All right. So you've heard of the utility internal service. The utility internal service fund each year usually summertime. We'll get a little update on what the balances are, the utility internal service fund. I'll call it Yusuf. And so the end of year budgetary balance for us for that account is six hundred fourteen thousand fifteen dollars and sixty cents. It's eight hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-one and five cents for the town. Utility Internal Service Fund Agreement is more than fifteen years old. So it probably could use an update between the town council and board asked after we're done having a maybe year up conversation. We should probably have a Yusuf conversation because the Yusuf agreement is pretty outdated at this point. I have linked this on the dashboard before. I also put it here. And so if you read through it, it, it has language that talks about consultant and it talks about ESCO and, you know, debt service and all those things. The consultant, it was Clearwater or something, that, that was in place when we were doing the Honeywell project with the town. And, you know, they were doing reviews and M&amp;Vs, which is called measurement and verifications. And it's all, it was all part of that apparatus. So a lot of the language here is outdated. And so if there's going to be a continuing UISF fund that is, that is separate from you, then, you know, or is between, that is not something that is under your direct control. So UISF isn't, it goes into that account and then you, you can ask the town council board. There are some things coming up now in the legislation that will give you more direct control over things. So the money that, that you save now, at the end of the year, you could probably put that into ERF. You know, and so there's a lot of things to talk about with respect to how things have changed in fifteen years. So at the end of year, when you roll it over, you notice that some of the conversation we had about ERF is that you requested. There's also things to talk about there too. So when you do start having these conversations, these two accounts could be something that intermingle in those conversations a little bit. Because, you know, as you start to reevaluate UISF, you may reconceptualize ERF and ask that you come back to the table on that. Because this conversation that we've been having so far is limited to ERF. And, you know, Yusuf has been something that's been brought up a couple of times, but there never really has been that commitment to have the conversation. And I think we really need, it's timely that we have that conversation. Because if they're going to go in and make changes to ordinance and all that, that would. Outdoors. So there are, there's some decision-making that has to be made. And if it is, then why not talk about this too? Because it really doesn't apply anymore. There's no ESCO project. You don't pay a consultant to look at your M&amp;V because there is no M&amp;V because there's no ESCO, you know, that's. So it just needs a reevaluation. So that's part of the conversation here is I recommend that at this point, maybe we bounce this to FFC for a conversation about how to have that, to proceed, you know, for that. And then come back with a recommendation about moving forward. And you can decide how you want me to reach out or if you want to reach out yourselves or whatever you want to do. But we can initiate a conversation about that in an official sense. So we go back and just kind of look at the balance piece of it. That money can be used for like boilers blow up or something. We can go over to the town and request, you know, that money to be utilized to help fund the boiler or to help fund capital equipment that's an energy, has some kind of energy function in nature. And that's been primary purpose here of it. So that, that amount has climbed over the years. I went and pulled all of them from the last few years. And so it's just equated itself up a hundred grand or so a year over the last couple of years to reach that level of six hundred.
All right, just for clarity, I, this one, there was six, there's six hundred thousand, that's a count that was a surplus of the board. Has it been accumulating those accounts? Is that correct?
It's, um, yeah, it's, uh, where that really comes from is when you were making your ESCO payments. And, you know, there's other things that go with it and all that. You know, anything that was, at the end of the year, remember how you transferred your energy budget, the entire thing over? And you're not going to, didn't have to do that anymore?
Yes.
Well, you, the short version, the shortest version, is that you spent less. You know, so that meant that the money that was differential between what was transferred over and what was spent went into these.
So that money's been going for education.
It's used for projects for energy. Yeah. So, so that's, that's where it comes from in a short version. We also have made investments overall in LED lighting and all that other stuff. So, you know, the energy costs of that kind of thing. There's also grant money when it comes back from the state that can go into Yusuf. The town generally has the control, it has to where things go. And then it divvies it up as more or less it's easy. So Yusuf is one of those things that fifteen years ago functioned a certain way and you may have more options now as a board. So there's two reasons to look at this. One, because you have more options at the board to do some things, you know, yourselves. And two, this language is completely outdated because not, a lot of these things don't happen anymore. There's, there isn't a consultant that we pay because there's no point in doing that to do any measurement and verification because there's no honeywell to measure against. And, you know, that, that is a long, long history conversation. And if you want to know about it, say coffee and talk, you probably. But the short version is probably time to reevaluate Yusuf. Either keep it, reorganize it, get rid of it if you want to. You know, it's, it's up to you. But that's, those are your balances. And I just wanted to let you know where that was right now. And if a boiler blew up tomorrow, we might be heading over there to ask for some money.
Boiler blow up tomorrow, come in to talk to you.
Yeah. Other things that happen is when you have dirty energy and it blows up stuff, which is happening in Tallinn. You know, that can cause issues that we can replace units with. Uh, you know, that can cause issues that we can replace units with.
Discussion. Brian, do you have anything?
No, I don't know initially on this, but I, I was just kind of curious how the, the uptick in the electric prices, of what's been going on in the state in the last couple of months and the chaos that's happening. Um, of public benefit, surcharges, all this other stuff. Is that going to affect anything with our budget in regards to our energy uh, costs and all that kind of stuff?
Well, great question that over time, yes. However, one of the things that was asked in the past about this was could the board use this to offset a very terrible energy year? Um, and that was one of the questions that was posed in this board, not your board, but one of the previous ones, and it was never answered. And so again, I think there's been a desire um, on a part of board members to reevaluate this and, you know, allow some flexibility for what you're talking about right there, you know what I'm saying? Um, but it never really, never really did get to the point where we were renegotiating it. And it is pretty much past due for that with its time.
Well, Dan's got his agenda, well, shit, I could pull that up. Keep pushing, it's on the agenda. All right, please welcome, obviously, everybody. Well, Megan, dinner. Anybody else like to speak? Dr. Willet, moving on then to, uh, item new business L two policy forty fifty employee employment and student teacher check.
Okay.
And this is a first read if I remember correctly, Dana?
It is, yeah, and um. There we go. And there it is. Magic. Magic. Okay, so um, this is very straightforward. The first two are quite straightforward really. It's, as you know, many times Shipman and Goodwin will have an updated model. Um, Shipman and Goodwin does have an updated model for the um, background checks. Uh, as you scroll through it, the, the bold is really what's the biggest up. Yeah, it's usually in the old. Um, and what it does do is it addresses this, uh, there is a new rule that you pay for student teachers background check. So whereas before we didn't have to pay for things and one of the updates here, and then again, it's not a ton of things that are different, but one of the ones that they updated here was that you, you pay now for the um, the teacher, student teachers check. Whereas in the past, when I went in and I had to pay for my own, but the, um, other things, sorry, I'm kind of flipping around. I know people are watching. Um, it also clarifies that in erased criminal history that's nolied cannot be something that is considered. Uh, and so they, that is supposedly something that people generally should just know on their own, but they decided to codify that in language and make sure that no one did, you know, nobody did anything unfair. So um, one of the other regulations or things they updated was that you um, you know, if, if the person that you're checking has a nolied record or something, you, you cannot, should not use that. So I guess some people needed to know that and that's why it's um, kind of just scoot around a little bit. Uh, termination of non-certified employee in accordance with applicable law, it used to be certified, I mean, it used to be just certified and they updated it because they realized that certified means a certain group of people in a school system and then there's a whole nother group of people that are non-certified. So they updated the language to include that as well. And um. Getting any here. Um, this was something everybody kind of already did anyway, but if at any time the district receives notice of a conviction or a crime or a person holding a certificate authorization from Ed, et cetera, et cetera, the district should send notice to the state board of Ed. Uh, we, we do that. Um, so that, that to me, I never realized that that wasn't something that was just automatic and we've been practicing that. But this puts it in, you know, in the language and keeps it there. So that's basically it. And then it has a updated recommended um, document that we post. This, you know, agency privacy requirements for non-criminal justice applicants, things like that, we post those up. If you go by um, in the HR area, walk into the, the um, office, if you were to go and take a little left and then down the corner. These are all posted everywhere and this is one of the posted. Um, these are um, the right, anytime you have a rights document, you post the rights document, um, privacy statements with respect to fingerprinting, all of these. So that's, that's essentially it. It's just updating that policy. It's housekeeping. It's getting the board um, up to date with the um, the Shipman model. Um, you know, we have many to move through, including Title Nine, you know, that request came up the other day. They just released a, a whole lot of Title Nine stuff, so you'll be seeing that coming up, a whole change, really a whole shift in how they're doing that. So anyway, this is twenty twenty-two before and we're just updating it.
Any questions, comments? Ready?
Yeah, um, I appreciate the work. It, it's hard to take two seventeen-page documents, one that's no, no highlighting, there's no redlining. Like, I don't know, how am I supposed to tell what the difference is if I'm, you know, again, trying to keep up and be ready? So I just feel like it, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can do this a little bit differently where we can see where the changes are, even if they're highlighted in this one and then here's down here, just because this found, I found it to be a little overwhelming to try to figure out, well, what exactly is different?
It makes sense that, you know, what you're asking. I think uh, so we balance it against right now, the old things are the things Shipman is saying is most updated, right? But when they do a, an update like that from say twenty twenty-two and they give us something in twenty twenty-four, it's not always that all the words, you know, it would take a very, very long time sometimes to do the complete strikeouts because I, I've done those. But when uh, Shipman has one of these kind of overlays, if it's something that is something we have to do anyway, that's a, it's the straight model language from Shipman. Um, generally what's in there, unless you have an objection to what's in the model language, which we can talk about, it's just not necessarily always efficient to do the red line strikes, you know, of, of everything because.
Could we just have like a, like a, you know, summary, like what you just did for us? Could we maybe have that?
Yeah.
You know, as a sort of, you know, here's the things to look at, maybe. I didn't want to put a lot of extra work, but if it's not too overwhelming, you know.
I could do that, yeah.
Here's the things to look at, this is what changed, you know, that would maybe just make it a little easier for me.
Yeah, sure. We can, all these summaries with it too. The, the stuff in there is bolded, is the stuff that's really.
Maybe I missed the bolding, perhaps. I couldn't, I'm.
And I, and I, it's not a lot, which is why.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I have, I have done some of the, sometimes I will do the full strikeouts with the yellows and the greens and all that.
Right.
That's usually when there's a lot of.
Okay. All right. So again, just was asking, maybe I, like, again, I apparently missed the striking, the bolding, but maybe molding if it was highlighted would maybe just make it a little easier to check.
Yeah.
And then you don't have to do it.
That makes sense. I'll try to make it more.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was my only thought.
Any other comments, questions?
Those shipment and Goodman, they, they, they reach out to your office when there's new um, guidelines or laws or or terminology you want to use regarding an updated of a policy for, well, there's a file or is, you know, our board of ed for sure, all the holder edits have these same policies. Are they the ones for each hour or do we reach out in regards to this for some other reason?
It's actually, there's, and there's a couple ways, but uh, you can get on an email distribution list with them. I get an email once a week. Any policies they've updated and a brief synopsis.
They have um, they have a, a place you can go and they have like all the policies. So generally what we do is there are some obvious ones that through HR we want to update, you know. So if there's some change in what we have to do with student teachers and whatever, you know, that's money and that's process. So we'll just, you know, grab that one. You can only do so many at a time, but they're constantly updating. And so something that's huge like Title Nine, that, I just went through a three-hour training for that. And I don't know that they've released their final copy of the update, but that's coming. And some of those take priority. So a Title Nine gets pumped up to the front. We do Title Nine and then the rest of the time, we're trying to just, you know, update the ones that are small. You know, here and there there's wording and so it's housekeeping more or less. But the, the answer is they have a site, you go look at it, they have everything and they'll send the, you know, emails every week and say, hey, look at this, look at this, look at this. And so we try to keep up. Um, but the ones we go for first are the ones that might have some kind of implication for the board from a legal perspective, like Title Nine, we've got to get on that. Up for the next policy.
All right, that, that answers my question. I was just understanding more or less.
And there's a book that comes out.
Come forward. Yeah, well, I don't know. Thanks. No thanks on the email and.
There's quite a few.
It's more exciting to be in the board.
Be careful what you, what you.
I don't think so.
A lot. All right. So this first read just giving you a chance to look at it.
Yeah, make sure when you're talking, let's make sure we're, we're projecting the audio, just being its usual difficulty.
It's something.
Yeah.
But the network tonight too, so it's really lagging.
All right. So if there are no additional comments, uh, Dana, did you have anything you wanted to mention on forty fifty? Forty eighty.
Can you hear me? It's, I, I'm struggling to hear you guys and I'm having, I know you guys are having tech issues, but uh, I don't have anything to add. Dr. Willet um, went over it pretty well and we went over it thoroughly in policy. Um, I, I don't want to interrupt the meeting too much because like I said, it's pretty choppy on my end and I don't know if you guys can hear me over here.
Yeah, we can, we can. Thank you. So all right, Dr. Willet, L three policy forty eighty, family medical.
Here it comes. Can I take a minute? That'll appear, it'll be magic.
Tony, real quick, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was just going back on Reenie's point just a minute ago with the making it sort of a little more clearer as to what was changed. For me, I'm, I'm seeing the bold and, you know, the bold parts and then the underlined parts and that's where my confusion point was. So there's a, you know, the, the uh, preliminary paragraphs here, just letting us know sort of the outline of what was, uh, what is in the document. If there was just a bullet just saying, look for the bold underneath, that's what you're looking for, for the new. I think that solves a lot of the problems there, but it just doesn't say anywhere in that preliminary paragraph or anything like that where what we should be sort of seeking, I guess. And so uh, yeah, I just went back and saw it. You could, you could say, oh, the underlined stuff looks like it's probably the new stuff. And then you have to go back and match it up and so um, so I think that's a fair point. If we just added some sort of bullet, just saying, look for the bullet, simple as that.
Yeah.
The highlighted, whatever it is, right?
Shall do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Rather than buy with the best summary, I can do more work.
All right. Um, so family medical year, um, this one has been uh, one of the Shipman recommended Mahalo Katesh to. As I have said with some of the other stuff, uh, sometimes it's just an overlay because they, they might make a hundred nuanced little changes. And as you read it, you have to go back and forth for everything. Um, I think one of the things they updated here was um, the paternity. And that's uh, something that the districts have to do. You, you've always had the ability to have it. Now they add more robust language for that. Um, and then there were just a, they updated the laws. There are different laws now that, that pertain to this. Um, and so this was a uh, referencing the new laws to, and so those are really the main pieces here. It was just referencing new laws to make sure that it aligned with the actual legal, I mean, the actual legal um, drivers for it. Uh, and then some basic paternity, paternity pieces, but that's it. It's not a big, not a really big thing. And that's why I didn't do a full strikeout and all that, but I'll, like we said, we'll do more of the narrative and holding here. I kind of, I used to do it some of that in the past. So it's not, it's, it's strictly one of those fast ones that Shipman and Goodwin puts out one. We don't mess with it too much because it's the language they absolutely want. And uh, sometimes they have little words here and there. Sometimes the meaning of the words are slightly different for them. They wanted to replace a word with another word because that other word is more protective or something, you know, so. These are just the easy ones because FMLA is one that, you know, you don't mess with. You just take the ship and stuff and put it right up. It's general. Some other policies we've talked about, it's more, you have a lot more discretion. Like, there are other policies we've had before you where I did the yellow and the blue and the red, because you have a lot of discretion. Something like FMLA, you can't really change too much of what they're telling you to put in there. Unless you want to make it wrong district, you know, vulnerability, so.
We given the, the laws change, we have to do what we can to make it. Any comments?
We spoke about FMLA and policy as well. It's very standard updates.
Does anybody know? All right. Dr. Willet, moving on for anonymous communication.
And uh, give it a minute, second here. It should appear. Can't really explain it. I'm hoping that it's soon.
Would now be the right time for the Jeopardy theme?
Oh, there's two of them. Um.
Pick one.
Okay. All right, um, anonymous communications, this came up in policy, I don't know, months ago, I think, right, Dana? Um, and it was batted around. Um, and so it, I think it was three or four meetings ago, I, I'm not sure. So there was a presentation on it. Um, there are some districts that have uh, policies that basically don't, um, don't honor any anonymous communications. Um, I think the cows, what goes to Brian, and generally because anonymous communications, depending on the type, again, like an anonymous communication that says something like kind of threat, you know, some direct threat that is of a serious nature, that's, that goes straight to the police. There's protocols for all hats of plan and stuff, but if somebody's threatening one of you or me or somebody who says something egregious, terrible or scary, there's protocols for following that. We don't, we don't shove those off to the side. It's, it's, those are looked at as a threat. Uh, these anonymous communications are more like um, somebody's disparaging someone else or saying a lot of disparaging things about anyone here. Could be any, any, anyone frankly, that works for the district or is on the board or is any of that. Um, but there's really no way to, to investigate any of it. It's just, I've seen, I'm sure you've all seen versions of this in some aspect of your lives here somewhere. And so what it does is it tries to squelch that um, from being used as a weapon against people. Because sometimes people can just put whatever kind of thing they want in a communication. And while there's no way to investigate it, it still has disparaged that person. It's uh, it may, you know, and it's been discussed, it's been publicly discussed, it's been shown, maybe somebody receives it and it's discussed, put somewhere. Um, and so that does have damage. It damages people because somebody might raise an eyebrow, but well, maybe that did happen, maybe something like that. With no substantiation of it whatsoever. So the, the idea is to not give energy to that kind of thing. Because it can really be utilized very negatively in all directions against all people. Um, and again, it's, it's not the same as if someone made some kind of threat. The, the difference is if somebody put a bunch of stuff out there and, you know, trying to, trying to do this in a lighthearted way, but you know, but. Willet wears Barney suit or something, whatever, something that, you know, no one's ever seen me in a Barney suit or any of you and pictures of a Barney suit. And so there's no way to really go back and find it. Um, so it's, it's meant to prevent there from that, that, that methodology of disparaging people from becoming something done in public session. And if something comes up that, that there's really no way to substantiate, there's no substantiation for it and something, you know, it's just a, a lot of vitriolic stuff about somebody or something, that comes to the superintendent and I, I process it with um, this, the health and safety people, you know, I would look at it and see, you know, with the um, safety and security lens, is there anything here that is um, going to put anyone in harm's way? Is anyone, does it look like this person who's writing it could do harm to themselves or others? And that's how we process those. And that's how we process those. And then I'd keep a file of them in case, you know, somebody needed it for some reason. But that's, that's the rationale. It's just preventing that from being used against people on board, public office, working for the board.
Comments?
How did that work with FOIA? Somebody's putting a FOIA and. Now that came in, that was negative about being anonymous now, but it still, and it may not reach the board. But now would that be something that somebody would receive when they put in a FOIA?
Just that anything can be voided. It would just then have to go, that would cost us. So let's say somebody voids it, but we'd have to redact, depending on what they. It would depend on if they, if they wrote something, whatever they're voiding, you probably have to check with the attorney to see if there's anything they had to redact and. Probably would have to give it up. But that's a good question. But my guess is, you know, anything that comes in, we would have to, you know, run through the attorney, redact and then buy. And that's why I would keep it if we wanted to point it. But it, it, the design, I think, is to avoid it from becoming, let's say that. Jane Doe didn't like John Doe. And so Jane Doe decide, or John Doe doesn't like Jane Doe, or whatever you want to say. So then they get into, you know, somehow anonymous communications come up about Jane. Then Jane is mad at John. And so anonymous communications come out about John. And then, you know, it just starts to take traction because they're giving it attention. Now they're feeling like they've been hurt. So then John's friend. Roger decides to send something, you know, anonymous about both of them or something. It just turns into a circus if it's encouraged. And if there's no, and that's different again from claims made. There are so many policies, which is why it specifies. As long as it's not under one of these other policies. There are so many ways to file complaints and there are so many ways to handle issues that. That really that kind of anonymous thing is not, it doesn't have. Purpose the way these other methods. You can file complaints in many different directions. There's many methods for it. And even kids, you know, when we have anonymous reporting, we don't actually, you know, not know who it was, what happens, even when you do it for kids. You know, in the schools. If. If Jane wants to file an anonymous report against John, Jane comes to the school and we keep Jane's name out of it. And we will approach John within the best way we can, not revealing Jane's identity. But we don't not know who Jane is. Because if you don't know who Jane is, you can't take, you know, there's no way to substantiate what's being stated against John. That makes sense. So when the kids do an anonymous report, they have the ability to remain anonymous. But it's, they're, they're not anonymous to us. And that part of it is important because there's, there's no way to sometimes bring, you know, investigator, go back to things if that's the case. It's just they can deny it and it's over. That's one of the disadvantages too, is that if somebody denies it, it's not. That's why the reports are usually, you know, we know who made it.
So, so I. Yeah, I, I'm not really on board, honestly. I feel a little bit like it's supportive and creating a policy to circumvent our own. Responsibility. You know, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the goal of the policy is and what the problem is we're trying to solve. I mean, are we inundated with anonymous complaints and things like that? Because I haven't seen any. And if there are a lot of them, then, you know, are they not being shared for the board? I'm curious. I just don't, I don't know what the problem is we're trying to solve with this particular policy. And again, why is the board considering instituting a policy that circumvents or removes our own authority? Why would we do that? I'm just not in favor of that. There's a lot of reasons why people submit complaints anonymously. For fear of retaliation, backlash, shame, et cetera, et cetera. And I understand what you're saying. There's other policies. You know, and I will just say, this is not at all directed against Dr. Willis or even this board. We have to think about. Fifteen years, who's, who's in the seats? It's not going to be us probably. And it's not going to be, you know, this is. More global is where I was thinking about, just to say. You know, staff may feel retaliation couldn't, you know, that they're going to be retaliating against their own coworkers or whatever. So I, I'm just wondering. I understand that there's maybe more validity if someone signs it, but does that mean that the anonymous person for whatever their fears are. Should not be recognized and given the opportunity to at least be considered? Secondly, or importantly, maybe, there's a reason why there's border. You know, and that's so that one person isn't making all the decisions for the district. You know, we're responsible to the public. I'm not going to vote to abdicate my responsibility or increase my authority in that way. I just, I feel like if it's, if it's an obvious thing and, you know, we can dance together for ten minutes. It's like, okay, you know, God, this doesn't have any validity, then why not just, you know, discuss it with the board and okay, yeah, everyone's, you know. It also protects the superintendent in some ways from not making a decision in a vacuum. The superintendent may not know and some other board members may like, oh, actually I've heard about that. And, you know, if there's just a decision made at one level, then, you know, maybe you're not getting, not you. The superintendent at the time may not be getting all the information that would help make a better decision. And then maybe puts the superintendent in some way by, by not getting it with some other people and some checks and balances. You know, again, reasons for checks and balances. And then what is the plan if the anonymous complaint is against the superintendent? You know, what are we doing there? He is a board, may never know about it if we adopt this policy. We may never know that the complaint ever came in because there's an opportunity for, you know, just, oh, there's not really enough here. So let me just not do that. And I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but we are creating an opportunity for that to happen. If we were to go forward with this. And, you know, finally, I'm just, I'm against. Instituting a policy that removes the ability of the entire board. To hear and discuss complaints against the district. Any issues that are related to students, personnel and safety are covered by executive session and would not be public anyway. We could always have those conversations in executive session. They're already under that umbrella. And so we don't need to worry about, you know, dispiriting someone's reputation or that type of a thing. So I just, I'm very uncomfortable with this and I've thought about it a lot. Gone down a lot of rabbit holes, but what if this, what if that? And remember when this happened and it's just. I don't know. I just, I am not comfortable with it. I'll stop it.
Yeah, I was just, I know we talked about this in policy, but it was a while ago. So I'll just sit down. All anonymous complaints or correspondence received by the board regarding the school districts. So again, the intent of this policy is for only emails sent to. Because I feel like we all get the same.
So I remember a few months ago, I had received a one about this. Came directly to me, Jayden registered. Right. And so that's not right or anything like that. It's in general inquiry, but they do come in every now and then. They do what they have.
So is this policy basically saying like, if I get an email, it says I have to put it like to my column board email? Is, that's what it was about.
Yeah, it would be forwarded to the superintendent and then we. Well, because the other piece is, kind of use Jayden's example or Register's example. So that was all the nature of understandably. So, but I think what could happen is, you know, a board member could say, I perceived an anonymous communication and said. He's, you know, and then the board member can say, well, I received an anonymous communication that, you know, she. And I think that that's the, the reason why maybe you're, you're not necessarily loaded to bear on it is that. None of you have had to necessarily be the, I mean, end of that, you know, but that, that's where these come from in these districts that have. Is things got out of hand and people started lobbying these good aides, you know, and through this, you know, veil. Or using it to kind of impact policy. So if, you know, somebody would say, well, this, this was stated to me because they, they wanted X, Y, or Z. And so that board member shares it, but you don't, when they come up now in public participation, people generally have to share their address. Or there's some part of it, there's a reason because they're verifying, you know, where this is somebody that has credibility or that lives here or whatever. You could be in a situation someday where people from out of town are trying to get something to happen in your town. And there's all these communications coming in that, you know, that you have no way of verifying if they're actually from anybody in town. Or, and you have processes for officially reporting all kinds of things. So. That's what this is. That language is actually written by Shipman. So just to clarify, I did not write this. This came Sean Shipman. So just knowing that's where it's from. Some districts do this, some don't. I suspect the ones that, that do it. Are doing it because of things that happened. And the ones that have it are trying to prevent those same things from happening. Because they realize it can be weaponized against anyone. And then I can create a cascade of it if, if it's entertained. And you do an executive session every time you start, you know, taking all of these seriously. Well, we're going to do an executive session for this, we're going to get an executive session for that. You know, you get, if that starts to get out of control and you are using a ton of time on executive sessions, looking into things that happen, no substantiation. And what's, what it's saying here is not like, if there's details that need to be investigated, that's not what this is saying. This is saying if there's just these kinds of statements that. There's no way to really find out the truth and it looks like it's crazy and hyperbolic, you know, it's not. Entertaining it. So you don't encourage that same behavior from others to weaponize it against. That's what it is. And so that's why I think places that have it probably have it because that happened.
Yeah.
This point of clarification is, how did this, did Shipman and Goodman bring this policy to us or his office? Because this is the first. We don't have a policy. Somehow how did this policy get to here tonight? Or even at the final data committee? So Dana, can you hear us? Dana? Phil?
Oh, she's got a thumbs up.
You can't, okay. Dana, the question that's on the table, and maybe you can help here, is how did the idea for the, the request to review this? Show up in committee? Was it from Shipman? Was it from the board?
I can hear you kind of, but you said, can we review this again in policy? Is that correct?
No, no, I'd like to know. I'd like to know how the idea to come up with. How the idea to come up or to discuss the policy? Where did that come? Chairman?
Historically, we. Also have communication issues.
So I'm struggling to hear you, but I think you're asking why this is brought to policy. So. Okay, so, but it was brought to us so we could make the adjustments, but the Shipman and Goodman made all the corrections. Like all the, all the, Shipman and Goodman reviewed it all. And they brought to policy just to review it and bring it to the board. Is that your question? I'm sorry.
No, no, let me just start from the top. So I'm asking for clarity, the very direct question. How did this come here tonight? Was it Dana, chairman of policy, I want an anonymous email policy? Superintendent wanting this policy on our books, or Shipman and Goodman recommending that we have this policy?
Well, Shipman and Goodman made adjustments and recommended we make the adjustments and bring it to the board. So we reviewed a policy. Sorry, Dr. Willis, go ahead.
Jayden, I'm thinking the timeline on this was when Jayden had that anonymous person or what. Speak through him to the board, that a conversation ensued because of that conversation that, and that it sparked past. Conversations about this, because this isn't a new conversation. It's just never something that everybody got around to. So I think it came, it was around the same time, and I can't remember exactly how, but when Jayden had that anonymous communication and then shared it. And so then it was, well, if they can, it was here, the board shared it. And then it was, I think, you know, well, if someone else had a communication and it was anonymous. Would they share it if it was against this communication? And how would that evolve? And then it created a conversation about how these go. And then I researched what some of the other districts had done. And then I called Shipman and I said, you know, this was all policy. Yeah, I was talking about it. I said, do you have language on something like this? Do people do this? And Virginia does it, and somewhere else does it. And then they wrote the language and brought the, the policy. And then there was a couple of policy meetings where we talked about it and I can't remember.
Just the gist of this, so I clarify what I just heard, he's saying there was conversation within the board. Now that you say something, I do recall some of that anonymous stuff. You heard that and then you just kind of went on your own, reached out to Shipman, hey, is there a policy? And then you brought the Dana's committee and she's just pushing it forward.
Yeah, I think that, that created some questions about if, you know, should we have any rules around that kind of thing? And that, that was also something that had come up in the past, you know, and sort of periodically. And so it just evolved kind of vicariously from that.
I just to add to that.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
So I think this may help clear up some of the timeline and stuff. So I forwarded that anonymous email on April nineteenth. Dr. Willis then said, well, actually, Brian, you had asked that we discuss in emails, something about the pros and cons to the. To the, the content within the email, not the anonymous portion of it. Dr. Willis added that to the next agenda. So whenever that meeting is, I can go find those meeting notes. Obviously not right now, but so I'm assuming it's in that next meeting. Whenever our next meeting was after, after April nineteenth. It's got to be somewhere in those meeting minutes, how this.
Well, and I have, I have planning meetings with all of you, meetings for curriculum. And that's where these things will come up is, well, this came up and do we want to talk about this? And I don't think originally there was even a document on it. I think it was just, it came up in that planning meeting and then it came up in the policy meeting. And then I went back and got more information for policy and it took a couple of meetings to make its way.
Okay. So then I guess, I'll get a couple of thoughts on it because you're right. I remember we've talked the topic in, in previous policy committees. And, you know, my position at that point and still, my position's changed, is that. I, I don't necessarily see a need. To the point that Dr. Willis made, if it's a safety issue, if it's an issue with a student, if it's an assault, if it's a whole bunch of. Incredibly harmful and there are laws, there are already policies in place, there are procedures. For somebody to anonymously or bigger board anonymously, get that to the appropriate people. If somebody wants to talk, that said emails that are perfect to us. All they have to do is put a fake name on that thing and send it and it's worked by this anyway. So what this really looks at is that small subset of emails, similar to the one Jayden got. That, to be quite honest, come in here and we as a board, or we as board members, make that decision whether to use it or not. If it's something that is personally, if that email had come through to Jayden and said some ugly things about you or some ugly things about Brian or how it had to be. Then the responses that are articulated in here, i.e. kicking it over to the superintendent, the investigation that is, are still available. Jayden could take that email. He could decide that this is something and he could kick it over to Dr. Willis team and we could still do those. I think by putting this in policy, what we're doing is saying in that small subset. Instead of relying on Jayden to make his decision or checking what he asked. And just, I don't know if it's a slippery slope. Sort of how I've been looking at it over the last few months is we talk, and not just on the topic of anonymous emails, whatnot. Sort of how I've been looking at it over the last few months is we talk and not just on the topic of anonymous emails, whatnot. I mean, this is. Any domestic or foreign issue going on, we, we talk about preventative measures instead of reactionary sort of methods. We talk about preventative measures. How I've been looking at this over the last few months in policy is this is a preventative, this is going to prevent us from X, Y, or Z. And so however, Wilson, I do think the points that are being made right now. Think I'm closer to, let's bring it back to policy and let's figure out a way to sort of, you know, engage the board with something like this. Yeah, but something along those lines. Because again, I don't want to discount the voice that you guys made. I think they're big boys. But again, just want to provide sort of my perspective of. Why would we want to prevent, be preventive over here, but not over here, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's sort of where, um, I'm going.
Good.
I, I, I think this feels unnecessarily confusing and complicated. Um. I don't think I disagree or agree strongly with anyone. I see everybody's point here. I guess. I, I, maybe, maybe the direction is more a policy where, you know, for instance, if Jayden received an email, an anonymous email that said, you know. Jen broke Dan's computer. He shouldn't bring that up in public session and have a discussion about it. Maybe the policy should more be about that if an anonymous email comes in of a certain nature. That's brought to the superintendent and we have an executive session about it. It's not something that should be brought up in public session. And it's not something that should disarm anyone all of a sudden to receive a attack in that way, even in an executive session, you know? If, especially with the FOIA thing I asked, like. Even in that situation, if Dr. Willett received or, or you received, or you received an email that said something about me. Knowing that that could be FOIAed and, and gotten, I would hope that. I was notified that there was an email that came in about me anyway, right? We should notify each other as colleagues. So maybe something needs to be more around that. Cause that I understand. I don't think any kind of, you know, attacks or, or. Or just not even attacks, but just, you know, unfounded allegations should be brought out in a way. That could be harmful to us as individuals, whether that be publicly or privately. Cause even in an executive session, it can, there'll be. Like an attack on someone. So maybe that's where the public needs to go. The, the part I'm having like trouble wrapping my head around is just like. There needs to be something that's like a town cohesion. Because when you think about things like we just said, we require. Anyone in public participation to give their name and their address, which by the way, isn't something I'm always very comfortable doing. I don't like giving my address out. Um, but we're required to do it when we speak in public participation. And, you know, they, we may not have dealt with this directly, but there was, we're all aware of the hubbub that happened at the town council. It was discussed in their public meetings. So there were anonymous emails coming in that were attacking and there were a lot of people who voiced concerns about that. They didn't want those being discussed. There was also, you know, emails that were coming in negatively about the budget, positively about the budget. And they were saying, okay, well, that's not a legitimate student or that's not a legitimate community member. So we can't count that. And then I think there was, and I'm not, I, I, I'm not. Clear, completely clear on this, but it was my understanding that there was something being done there. On the town council level where their emails were being filtered out so that those emails weren't even reaching the council. If they couldn't verify. Which I believe was going through the town manager and they couldn't verify that they were accurate, they were from an actual community member or student. So then the town council wasn't even viewing those emails. So. If they're going to have, you know, we should all be doing the same thing somehow. It shouldn't be that, oh, we're accepting anonymous emails in. That the town council isn't accepting emails, anonymous emails in and, you know, some people and. It's some people are being, you know, need to give their name and address. And then some people are having that waived for some reason. Like there should just be. Especially amongst both boards, we should have the same rules when it comes to the way the community participates with that. So I guess that's my issue with it. That if they're doing it one way, we should be together somehow doing it the same way. And whether that's their way or our way. I don't know, but I, I, I don't think we should have all of these different rules for the two boards that make up this community.
One of the things I've looked at, one of the reasons they placed. Is because of the availability heuristic or, you know, like it's this psychological thing that. If you mention something and I forget 21 times, there's a number like, if you, if you send something and you do this 20, you know, something like 21 times, most people. It's one of those misinformation techniques. So, you know, maybe they started filtering because if you say. There's complaints against Johnny because the student, Johnny has done something terrible, right? And then we dismiss that. But then it happens again, two weeks later, we dismiss that. Then it happens again. But these are anonymous. Sooner or later, people start to think so many of these, you know, Johnny must have done this. And I think that's part of the, the reason why districts are pleased to start doing this because. Yeah, that can't fly. I mean, if that's what would, and technically that's would be allowed right now. That kind of thing might happen, which might have been why they started for different reasons. But if something's stated enough times, people will believe it. And so that, that they use a public mechanism to, to make that happen. Um, and that's, that's part of the concern with just allowing blanket anonymous communications. I like the idea maybe of anything that comes in and goes to executive session. When you'd have to have one every, you know, if there were a lot coming in, you'd have to have one every couple of weeks to handle. But if things got crazy. But at least it's not making that happen where it's publicly stated 15 times. And then people start to go, something, there just wouldn't happen if that happened. And this has got to be some truth to this because it's coming up 15 times. You know, that's how. And it is like, there is a psychological research based in there. That is a thing. People, they hear it. It's why people think that airlines, you know, they're afraid of airline crashes because the news shows every airline crash terrible all over the news and they, you know. But they don't happen in anywhere near the frequency that human beings think they do because of the way that they show what news, you know? So it's the same general thing. It's just the more you see something, the more you think it might be, you know, more prevalent or you might associate it to that person. So that's partly what it's trying to do too. And again. But, you know, it's up to you entirely. You could sit it back and think about it more, but it.
Let's do this.
Well, I just, you know, so based on that, it's like, so I guess, again, maybe something to think about is. All right, we wouldn't be bringing you up in public session and maybe it wouldn't be part of our course on it. And so we filter it somehow. And to your point, if we got a bunch of these things, we wouldn't necessarily want to go into executive session. But if it was on a smaller level. You know, it could even be something that, you know, that again, I received it, but if you received it, maybe you filter it for Tony and I. If it's something very benign, then Tony and I maybe squash it with something larger. We said we need to call an executive session for this and have.
I like that.
There's ways to, you know, and there, there are ways to hear it. But I, I did want, I did want to just say, I may have touched on this, Reenie, but. When it comes to like a safe, a safe, I, I don't want to discourage people from reaching out, right? Because you want to make sure that there's a safe space for things. And obviously we're not talking about, you know. When I think of those things, I think about student complaints, mainly things like that. And I would never want to say that those things couldn't be brought in. So. I don't necessarily think that, you know, we, there shouldn't be, oh, I don't know how that would be us, but, or, or that would need to be about one of us, but. I'm not saying that those things shouldn't come in, but I do understand, again, we saw it with the town council. I do understand the need to make sure that we're not making a public spectacle. We're not harming each other from it. We're not harming our staff from, from things like that. So maybe this just needs to be tweaked in a certain way. But it's not necessarily that we don't need anything at all.
I mean, I can check to see if we could do such things in executive session. If you receive them. That's where automatically goes. So there's no other. Thing. And then you all hear about it. It's just, if somebody starts to be wanting it, you'll, you'll be busy. You know, but that's, that's another way to prevent it.
If it becomes something that's. Confused isn't the right word, but it becomes, becomes a larger issue. We can always regroup and possibly get some more constraints or.
So let's take this back. Let's kick this back to committee. This is the first reason. We, we don't have to vote. We don't have to. Uh, let's save policy, then you take another look at it. But I think everybody's making some really valid points. Dr. Willett and Dana, I think there are some things that we can look into. Again, I am. And I recognize entirely what you're saying, Dana, that preventative measures, there, there's certainly a lot to that. And there's certainly a lot to. Wanting to make sure that you don't act too late. But I also am incredibly hesitant. To start legislating based on things that might happen. I think. I thought on much bigger scales, you know, not to dramatize. But history is full of. Where we let fear drive us in direction we didn't necessarily want to go. It is certain. I, I just think without being overly dramatic, let's take it back. Let's dig into it a little bit more. Dr. Willett, Dana, I think we've heard kind of the board's thoughts on it. So maybe that, that helps guide that policy a little bit better to where we're thinking. And then we could bring it back when it's ready.
Right. So going back then. There is no old business. So board action. In one, uh, the BOE meeting dates. Dr. Willett, start clicking now.
Okay. See it? Okay, it's coming. It's got to come. I've, I've got it.
We've got it.
All right, this pretty straightforward. It is bringing back to the meeting dates. Uh, you had made some changes as they're reflected here.
Any comments? Looks great. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2025 meeting dates as so moved. Second?
Second.
Comments, considerations? Uh, Brian says it looks good.
Jayden concur.
All right, then let's vote. Jayden? Hi. Reenie?
Hi.
I'm, hi Jen. Brian?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Bill?
Aye.
You lost that? Okay. All right. Dr. Willett, we have meeting dates. Um, we get that. All right, item N2, start clicking P card.
Okay. I see it.
We see it? Motion, yeah.
So I, now. Appreciate it. Okay, there is. So the, the P card is back. Questions were asked. I put it on the dashboard so everybody could have those and, um. This has made its way back. I think I've talked about it briefly too, and it made its way back.
Okay. Uh, comments?
I just, I do think we did say something about we'd have an annual, like, uh, accounting of the point.
Well, that, that's a piece, but I promise you. So you could even make it in your motion and say. It's a motion that. That language, I think is. Language to make sure that we use the right language to pay and prove it. But you could add in the superintendent will provide an annual report on, uh. Friends. Readings.
Uh, another point that I thought about. Regarding this, I know you had stated at the last, I think it was at the last meeting regarding this, or maybe it was a. I can't remember if it was the one I just found online, um, about regarding about getting, uh, monthly. Just seeing the monthly charges, because it'd be a lot easier to see what would be, uh, what would be just utilized on the card. I think if you can. You want to just include that in the, uh, to the.
I think there would be something.
Say in your committee, uh, kind of monthly with the, maybe the monthly financials. Just add another sheet to.
Yeah, so I understood it. P car, uh, and you correct me, we gotta, we have annual expenses one time where you see all the things. But is it really easy to see a monthly summary?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh. Whatever you want to do. You don't, you don't do that now.
Right.
You could make it an annual thing and just go over it or, uh. Whatever you want to do. Okay, I think.
I'd like to see a monthly if possible.
Yeah, is it easy enough to just include the monthly statement?
I don't know, because we don't do it.
Well, typically.
I mean.
Statement in, you know.
I, I, I would say whatever you want, we can do. Um, I don't know how hard or easy it is. It would be one additional thing to do. Running it, I mean, PDFing it and getting it wherever we're getting it, but, um. I mean, uh. The P card itself is just superior to the AMX and that's the main objective here, but.
So what F C can decide. Why don't we do this? Why don't we let F C, um, want to determine the period? Or be whatever, repudiate the committee and then.
So doesn't that have to be part of the action or not?
Action is just to endorse.
Yes, the action.
Okay.
You can do anything you want.
I'll circle that.
Can we now?
You can have, you can ask anything. Ask anything you want.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you for reviewing and gathering the information that we're all looking for.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Thank you for considering the P card. It, it, it will be a lot easier.
Yeah, so, so long as the, so long as the superintendent, um, provides the annual statement to the Board of Education. Home Public School and the Board of the Education of the Town Public School has the authority to enter into an agreement with the Bank of Montreal for purchasing cards. Motion to authorize the chairperson of the Board of Education and superintendent of schools. To enter into an agreement with the Bank of Montreal to secure procurement cards for each authorized employee of the school system under such terms and conditions as approved by the board. The board authorized superintendent of schools and or his designated to execute a P card program agreement on its behalf.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Did, did, did we want to add the piece about the annual?
Oh, I'm.
Oh, it's like, it took me a minute to realize. Any other comments?
I think, not that I want Dan to have to read this again.
We should do.
But there's a typo and is that important? And, and Dan actually read it perfectly to as it was written. Board of the Education.
I think, uh.
So as long as that's okay? Okay.
Lisa, you got more of the education grammar? Okay.
I'm sorry, what line were you looking at?
The very first line, it says, and Board of the Education. And Dan read it just as written.
Ah, is it? Okay, thank you.
That's what happens when we start the meeting with a B.
Dan didn't say that.
Be good.
Others?
I heard a second.
All right. Let's vote then. Jayden? Reenie?
Aye.
Dan? Hi, Jen?
Aye.
Brian? Uh, Katie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And we're still being honest. Dr. Willett, you are authorized.
Right. And I think you've gone through all of your official items.
Like that, James can motion.
Public participation. Again, comments must be limited to items on the agenda. We will cycle between people in the room and on the line. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Going twice. Okay, seen none. Dr. Willett? Again, the timer is intimidating. Some information. Everybody from the board. Jen?
Um, bear with me. So I didn't prepare this, but I did want to first say, um, you know, this is our last meeting or at the beginning of school next week. So, um, I want to wish our students the best of luck on their, um, their next year in their schools. Um, my youngest just went to his high school where he's been. So I will thank everyone who put on that event. He had a great time, but he usually does. Um, so, um, but I also, I also do want to make sure, you know, that we, we touch upon the fact that, you know, as Tony brought up in his chair report. You know, with the CEA survey. The, the budget cuts that we made. There's, you know, they. They, they were very real and they, they're impacting the school year. They're going to impact our students. They're going to impact our families, but. Mostly they're going to impact our staff. And so.
Mostly they're going to impact our staff. And so um I want to thank this board for everything that we all did to try to save. And retain as many programs and services and people as. We could for this year. Um, I'd like to thank the superintendent for everything that we creatively did. To try to bring back some of the things that we in this room couldn't figure out a way to save. Um, you know, one of those things, you know, for example, I know that there was a thing you were given um about retaining the French program. But I just would again, would like to remind everyone that that doesn't come without sacrifice. It's excellent that we are able to still have a French program at both the middle school and high school. But we we also need to be mindful that. We we were able to do that because we had someone who left the high school position and we eliminated that position. We lost a full time position and now we have a teacher who is splitting their time between the middle school and the high school. In order to still achieve that in some way, and it is not going to be the same. And our high school French students are going to actually have to revolve their schedules around that. So only able to take certain sections at certain times at certain events, and it is limiting the availability of some of it in the middle. So again, it is a wonderful thing that we were able to do that, just like it was a wonderful thing. We were able to, we were able to get that grant, Dr. Willet. That allowed us to do flexia, but, you know, again, wouldn't it be wonderful if we were able to bring in grants and and add some of those. Add some of those things, you know, we are going to be, our teams are our our down now team leaders and curriculum liaisons that. That was a hu- huge responsibilities that now will be, you know, will fall upon our administrators. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that we have a very hardworking staff coming back who are going to be. Doing their jobs, supporting our students to the best of their abilities, but they are going to be doing that with with some additional burden and stress. And so I have a lot of respect for that. Um, I know everyone in this room has a lot of respect for that. I want to thank them. For going in and um teaching our students and offering them everything that they do throughout the school year. And um, just a reminder that, you know, to parents and families, you know, find ways to support your staff. Teachers, you know, even a thank you goes a long way, you know, contribute to staff appreciation events, you know, reach out to your room parents and. And send in those, you know, wipes and cleaners. There's there's a million very small things and very large things that we can do. To show our appreciation to the staff that um is with our children all day and a million things that we could do to make our students' lives a little bit brighter. Um, just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that for.
Uh, one. Anybody, I would want to thank. The the town council members. With individuals, I reached out to either myself or to Jen or or one of you guys. Can't have conversations. Meeting to different councils that want to talk about things that are important to them that are not necessarily county. And I think that's a great way for them, for any of the, you know, members to tell the community to to interact is to reach out. And have those conversations. I don't know. And so so thank you to the ones that have and please continue. Uh, I also want, just along with the first day of school and those things, just to to add in there. You know, we've got a very busy week between now and next week with school starting out, so. Uh, Dr. Will, and then I know it goes without saying, but watch our step. Let's keep an eye and, you know, do what you need to do and um that goes for the office staff as well yourself. Uh, I think we can all be mindful that this next week is going to be very busy. So if we've got stuff that you want to reach out to the team, that can wait a week, yeah, maybe let's get it done and let's give it time. You realize me or Jen at the start, if you've got, you might want to make sure you get out there. We can absolutely coordinate and and try to let things move a little bit more. Continuing the the danger. All right.
Right. Let's have one. Kind of speak of my interest. Um, when Barbara Dilly Burns is retired now, um. Wasn't aware she was retiring until this evening. So what is the direction for E L A program? Curriculum supervisor status or how does this whole process work? Did we have somebody or is this? You know, or not now, when we went into the budget, so I guess there's.
Oh, no, it was not, no, not, this is fair. Okay, so we post it, you you have to do a posting, but we'll post out. Um, it basically will do a search like we do for any administrative, like we do for middle school, for anybody else. We post it usually in a couple of places, C T Reed, I need things like that. Um, there's three, there's four layers of the interviews. The first is screening, because sometimes you'll get, you can get up to hundreds of things and some people just don't know what they're applying for. Like you sit down everything that's not.
I understand.
Um, and then you have first interview, then you have a second, then a performance task, and ultimately they come here. You get the prime candidates.
So what are we doing for next Tuesday? What happens with this role that she was taking charge of?
Um, well, we have other supervisors stepping in in their areas of expertise to. Um, to cover for that. Plus, we have training right now called inter reading that um I wrote a grant, we got the grant. Um, so we have programming.
Yeah, I remember that.
So they're coming out and right now, luckily for about, I mean, first of all, we could never, she's amazing and having her here is definitely better than not. But in this period of the next six weeks, I'm going to try to um task people with picking up little pieces of, you know, this massive thing she did. And we'll get through the next six or so weeks. I I think we can place someone in about six weeks.
Okay.
So it's just picking up and giving certain people the tasks and I might have to compensate a few people, like if I have a teacher or doing something, I might offer them compensation to do it. Um, because you actually have to.
Yes.
Um, but um, a lot of those inter reading trainings were already scheduled. So, you know, we'll be able to get, keep those going and um.
No, no, I understand. Every time I've spoken with her, it was just, it's just, just a welcome knowledge. It was totally just fantastic every time I. You know, I had a chance to talk, there were so many standard issues that need to be filled there, you know, so. All right, thanks for the update on that.
I think I'd be highly intimidated to be in her.
Are we a part of that? May I just ask, pay that as a question? Are we a part of that interview process as we are when?
You get the, you you get the final candidate.
Oh, yeah, oh.
Yeah, and then.
Is that in an executive session or is that open?
I think it is executive session. You asked. It's the same thing and then you come out and you go.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you on that. I don't have any. Good. Question with your.
Just meet someone. Dan or me.
All right, Jayden. Hi, Remy.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Hi, Jen.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
All right, everybody.